I'll go ahead and just briefly cover a director's report. Our typical item is an agenda forecast for what's coming your way. Your next meeting is October 26th. And one of the items you'll have is continued from your last meeting. It's an application for a single family home on a vacant lot on Pullman Water Course in the Stalaski Gonzales Plan Development Area. You continued that item to a date certain, which is two weeks from now. Steph has been working with the applicant and we look forward to bringing you the revised plans in a couple of weeks. In addition to that, Brittany Cosellino, who is here tonight, is bringing forward an application for a new home at 574 Magnolia. This is a part of town where the commission recently reviewed environmental documents as well as other single family development in that area. And so this is a last lot on this side of Magnolia towards Highway 1. A story polls will be going up soon. That's also true for that Pullman project. The story polls will be revised for that. Steph will let the commission know when the story polls are up and ready for, ready for your consideration. Brittany can share. We have a director item coming up. If you could put that in the record for us, Brittany.
Sure. Tomorrow we'll be approving a new detached ADU at 850 Third Avenue. This was another one of the ADU batches from our Measure D approvals earlier this year. And we are happy to keep moving these through the hopper.
Thank you. And then for City Council, their last meeting, they had the second of two electrification ordinance study sessions. They made a lot of progress at that meeting. And if possibly at the end tonight, John Derry could give a little bit of an update on that if we still have time. That said, we know there's a baseball game on, so perhaps some desire to adjourn to that. On November 2nd, City Council will reconsider the Measure D transfer item. At their last meeting, they requested the paper back to them, having transferred four Measure D certificates from outside the downtown area to, or excuse me, inside to outside the downtown for four affordable housing units. Bridget Rick is here now. You can bring him over. Commissioner Hernandez. And I'll just wrap up that Steph has been very busy preparing for the November 9th Joint Study Session Special Meeting. It's a work session at the City Council and Planning Commission. Continue to hold that for an early start at 5 o'clock. And we will give you more details soon. And we're looking forward to a really engaging evening to talk about affordable housing opportunities, sites that were enabled by the land use plan, and opportunities also for improving the Measure D ranking system to better support and facilitate housing development. And that's our update for tonight. So thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. We just flipped the order and you've missed the director's report, but I can update you later. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to Bridget to get this Zoom meeting started.
Sorry, I'm on mute. Apologize. So this evening, welcome to the October 12th Planning Commission Meeting. I wanted to welcome everyone and let you know that we are filming this live on Channel 27, local channel 27, and Pacific Coast TV's website live. Those of you there in the audience, which you have a few people in attendance, you will have the opportunity to speak. We have a general public session and also at each public hearing item. For those of you that are speaking, you can mute and unmute with star six. And you can raise your hand and leave a star nine. And you, let's see, there was correspondence that came out this evening. Brittany Cosellino sent the commission two pieces of correspondence, one related to general public comment that's not on the agenda, and the other was pertaining to the Poplar Project that is in front of you this evening. I'm going to go ahead and hand over the meeting to Vice Chair Holgers, who run the meeting this evening.
Thank you, Bridget. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So hopefully I will get this correct, but maybe, shall we start with the pledge first?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which
Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Oh, do I go ahead with the roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Reddick is absent this evening. So Commissioner Hernandez? I don't know if we lost him. Oh, there he is. No? We lost, there he is. Mr. Hernandez is present. Commissioner Gorn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Benjamin? Not here yet. And Vice Chair Holgers.
Bridget, he won't be coming tonight. I did not record that he had to go out of town and forward that to you. It's my messaging, so.
It's okay. No worries. Just want to make sure. Yeah. And Vice Chair Holgers is here. So we have three for a quorum this evening.
Great. Then I think that we'll move on to the, to the general public comment. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any, on something as long as it's not on the agenda for tonight. I don't know, Bridget, if there's anyone raising their hand. If there is, I'll open it up.
Yes, we have Dave Shore that would like to speak.
Great. I'll open up the public comment.
Do we have audio? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. And I'm keeping a timer. My timer is not connecting at this moment, so I will keep track with my phone. Thank you.
I've got one as well. Thanks. I'll start now. Installment number three on the Hyatt. Tonight I'd like to talk about impacts, project impacts and mitigations. If, for example, a project were to impact a wetland, there are things that can be done to mitigate the impact of the project. The wetland in question can be worked on, enhanced, protected, fenced, whatever. In extreme cases, an alternate wetland can actually be created somewhere else, which has been a reasonable offset in some situations, and we hope that the critters will go and find it. Perhaps we need proper signage for that. But traffic circulation, both as a proxy for greenhouse gas production, can be mitigated even for large projects. I'm getting echo, but not muted. That might be Rick. Thanks. Traffic, traffic circulation can be mitigated, actually. For example, in this case, for example, a $10 per night per room rented traffic mitigation fee on the Hyatt could go into a fund which could go towards a project, a joint project between the city and school district to bring back the school buses. This wouldn't help with weekend traffic, but it sure would help on weekday traffic, and it would be a win-win situation. However, when we get to the unique situation of visual resources, we have a different kettle of fish. Visual resources are subjective, but they are written throughout the LUP and throughout the municipal code in prominent fashion. They are the reason that people come to Half Moon Bay. People don't come to Half Moon Bay to look at hotels or businesses or houses. They come to look at the ocean, the inland hills, and the views towards those, those items. That is why it's so important that the Planning Commission be very diligent in preserving and protecting those visual resources for the simple reason that a loss, a blockage, a decrement of a visual resource cannot be mitigated. You cannot make a new visual resource. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. And that illustrates the extremely vulnerable status and the importance of the commission and the AAC working together to preserve and protect our precious visual resources. I know somebody who worked in Half Moon Bay that lives over the hill, and they once said to me, every single day, this place takes my breath away. They weren't referring to the view of the hotel yet to be built or other hotels. They were referring specifically to the views of our inland coastal hills. Any decrease in those visual resources appears to be inconsistent with city code and the LUP. And I would submit that it's the duty of the Planning Commission to continue working with the project applicant for the Hyatt, to continue to work down the size of the project to the point where it is not diminishing our visual resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Are there any other pub, public comments, Bridget?
I'm not seeing anyone else raising their hand.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the, the public comment, and we'll move on to our first agenda item and only one for the night.
We need to do the minutes. We didn't approve the, now that Commissioner Benjamin is no longer in the meeting, I don't know that, do we have, no, because Commissioner Gordon was not there. So we're going to have to postpone another set of minutes to the next meeting. So the September 14th and the 28th will be moved to the next meeting.
The, okay.
They're just both going to get deferred due to lack of quorum.
All right. So we'll move on to the Poplar Gateways Plan Notice of Preparation Scoping Session. And I'm not sure who's going to be taking the lead on presenting on this.
That will be me. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Everybody see this, okay? All right. So good evening, everyone. My name is Brittany Cosellino, Associate Planner for Half Moon Bay and Project Manager for the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan. And I'm happy to be here with you tonight to go over the Notice of Preparation Scoping Session. The purpose of this meeting is to gather input from the public and the Planning Commission on the scope of the Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, that is being prepared for this plan. And I'll try to go through this quickly. I know we all have a baseball game we want to go watch, but I will give an overview of the project and a description of the environmental review process and potential scope for the EIR for this project, as well as some important milestones and next steps. Then we'll have time for community comments and clarifying questions, as well as discussion and direction from the Planning Commission. So the project, as we are defining it for the purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA for short, is the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan itself and the elements that the plan includes, which I'll be going over on some of the next slides. The project location is the Poplar Beach Bluff Top Park area that is located between Kelly Avenue and Poplar Street. It comprises the city-owned bluff top lands in this area bounded by the Poplar Beach and Pacific Ocean to the west and the West of Railroad Plan Development Area to the east. There's a bit of a history on this project and why we are where we are tonight. Back in 2016, the city conducted a sea level rise vulnerability assessment, which identified our bluff top areas as eroding up to two or even three feet per year, which would, was identified as impacting the coastal trail in this location in the not-so-distant future. So following that, we engaged with Nichols Consulting Engineers, or NCE for short, to study this specific area of the city-owned bluff top lands and look at the existing conditions of the coastal trail, as well as the specific erosion and drainage patterns. The image on the slide here is from that erosion study, and you can see in the dash lines where the projected bluff edge is in 2050 and 2100, under an unmanaged scenario where nothing is done to manage the drainage and erosion problems in this area. So you can see that does show a significant impact to the coastal trail, which is such a local and regional significant asset in Half Moon Bay. So with that data, our City Council confirms that the city does need to move forward with a master plan for protecting and enhancing this area and the assets in the park. And that master plan is dubbed the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan. And while that was going on, the city was also developing and finalizing its Parks Master Plan, which identifies this city-owned park as a passive park for recreation and access, but that it is a need of improvements to, to enhance the user experience in this So following a slew of community engagement opportunities, including some onsite open houses and alternatives workshops and meetings with the Parks and Rec Commission throughout 2018 and 2019, the public draft of the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan was produced in October 2019. And the goals of the plan include enhancing the public access and recreation opportunities, as well as public safety throughout the park, protecting the natural resources in the area, preemptively planning for sea level rise, and providing park amenities that are consistent with that passive recreation and kind of natural setting of the area. And I know what you are thinking, October 2019 was a lifetime ago. We did have to put this project on hold during shelter-in-place over COVID, and we are happy to have been able to reinstate it and re-initiate the environmental review process. So we did intend to be here doing this meeting with you much, much sooner, but here we are. So with those project goals in mind, the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan includes this conceptual diagram that shows all the different plan elements. And those primary elements include managed retreat of the coastal trail, erosion and drainage control along the bluff edge, habitat restoration between the bluff edge and the new trail alignment, improvements to the vertical beach accessways at both the end of Poplar Street and at the accessway called the slot that is closer to Kelly Avenue, improvements within the parking lot and along the Poplar Street access drive, construction of bluff top overlooks for access management, as well as access improvements along the bluffs, and park amenities, including permanent restrooms, utilities to connect to those restrooms, wayfinding signage, and waste and pet waste receptacles. It's just a quick look at some of the conceptual diagrams for the overlook areas and for the trail layout. The split trail design did come out of the public engagement process, and it does allow for these vegetated buffer areas between the pedestrian trail and the bicycle trail, as well as between the bluff edge and the, the trail. On a couple of the project elements that include project variants for the, for the ER purposes, but I'm happy to take any questions on the other plan elements at the end of this presentation. So starting with the parking and circulation improvements, overall, these are intended to improve the public access and safety and circulation of the beach parking lot, as well as Poplar Street. There are some baseline activities that are already occurring. The Plan Commission did see the CDP and SEQA for this in July to widen the poplar pedestrian path that runs parallel to Poplar Street, as well as installation of speed tables along Poplar Street. And then the project variant for this element includes a potential drop-off loop for vehicles and equestrian parking on the north side of Poplar Street. And that would enable a more functional layout and expanded vehicle parking spaces in the existing beach parking lot area on the south side of Poplar Street. And then for the erosion control and drainage improvements, the overall intent is to redirect the surface flows that come down from the foothills through the neighborhoods to the bluff edge, away from the bluff edge with some strategic grading and revegetation in disturbed areas. So this would be done with a green infrastructure focus, like the bio swales that would be located between the trails as shown in this conceptual design here. Then the variant related to this project element includes a consolidated storm drain that would take advantage of the existing drainage points at the north and the south ends of the park along Poplar and Kelly, where there are existing outfalls. And this could include new piping, but would not include any bluff armoring. The plan is proposed to be implemented in phases. Phase one would include near-term projects such as resurfacing and temporary realignments of the coastal trail in areas where there are more immediate erosion threats, as well as temporary relocation of the memorial benches and the split rail fencing, and then revegetation in any areas that are disturbed by that, those temporary relocations or realignments. And phase one is, is anticipated to occur within about a year of the plan and EIR adoption. And then phase two would include the managed retreat and restoration project elements, including the full coastal trail retreat, erosion control along the bluff edge, and habitat restoration, construction of the outlooks and wayfinding signage throughout the, the new trail alignment. And then finally, the more permanent, long-term park improvements would be part of phase three, that would include the permanent restrooms and utilities, the beach access improvements, and the planned variants. Phase two and three are both proposed to, or they're, excuse me, they're dependent on funding for, for the timing of implementation, and that would likely occur around year five after plan adoption, or later depending on funding. So the purpose of the environmental review and the scoping stage that we are in tonight is to gather comments from the community and from our decision makers, as well as to engage with our, the public agencies. The notice of preparation includes the project description and the potential scope for the EIR, and that is out for a 30-day comment period right now. And that is what we are hoping to get input on to identify the environmental topics that will be addressed in the EIR. And then the EIR itself will disclose those environmental impacts, look at ways to prevent or minimize impacts through project alternatives, and it's just a good opportunity to enhance community participation and engage with the agencies that we may need permits from to implement this project. And then, of course, to equip our decision makers, like yourselves, with information that you need to make decisions on the plan adoption and implementation. So we are, of course, at the scoping meeting now. The NOP and initial study is out for circulation for 30 days, as I mentioned. The deadline for comments is November 1st, and I'll talk about that a little more in a moment. Following that, the next kind of key milestones include gathering any comments made during this 30-day period, incorporating that into the draft EIR, and then circulating that for 60 days. During that 60-day period, we will hold another public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then gather those comments on the draft EIR and incorporate them into the final EIR and finalize the plan itself. And then we do intend to come back to the Planning Commission for a final time with a, for a recommendation to the City Council on the, the final plan and EIR, as well as a CDP for the phase one improvements. There has been some environmental analysis done to date, including a preliminary biological report that was prepared and circulated in 2018. It did identify one and three parameter wetlands as defined by the Coastal Commission and Army Corps, as well as a number of special status species and habitat for overwintering raptors, as well as potential foraging and upland habitat for the San Francisco garter snake and the California red-legged frog. The full biological report is underway, as well as the wetland delineation. It is an admin draft and Admin draft and we will be getting that out for the standard forty five day circulation soon. Of course, while this preliminary biological report was going on, we were also working on wrapping up our land use plan and. Did anticipate this project in that plan and are of course thinking about how this project will comply with our new habitat protection policies. So the initial study that was included as a attachment to your staff report. Was prepared to. Hon in on the scope of the EIR and focus the topics that the ER needs to cover and depending on if the. Project will cause potentially significant impacts to those environmental topics or. Will cause no or less than and less than significant impacts and so you can see those potentially significant impacts. Discussed in the initial study on the left hand side here, that is the proposed scope for the draft EIR. At this point, as well as the topics that were scoped out on the right. The EIR will also discuss a reasonable range of project alternatives, including the. Required no project alternative and other alternatives that will reduce or minimize potential environmental impacts. And at this point, those alternatives include the project description with a single bike and pedestrian trail instead of the split trail. With any adjustments to the alignment or trail materials to avoid sensitive biological resources. As well as a alternative that includes the full project description with without the the plan variance that I went over earlier. We welcome comments again by mail or email to my attention, this is contact information for both and again. That deadline for comments on the notice of preparation and initial study is Monday, November first at four P M. So tonight we are happy to take clarifying questions and then public comment before discussion and direction from the planning commission and thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Do any of the commissioners have clarifying questions before we go to public commissioner Hernandez?
Is part of the scope of this project looking at the landfill that's immediately next to the park or are you. Reviewing that as part of the environmental impact means we have coastal erosion, I mean this area. In the long in phase two and phase three seems like there might be some overlap there.
Yeah, great question and it is outside of the project area, it is. Mentioned in the initial study as it is so nearby, but it will not be impacted by by the project.
Great and then those those only clarifying.
Commissioner Gorn, do you have any clarifying questions? I have two, actually, one is somewhat related, is it my understanding that the parking lot south of Poplar, so the Poplar. Where parking is now, there's not, it isn't, it doesn't, to my read of this, there's no change happening to that, the the. Footprint of that parking lot or anything like that, is that correct?
That is correct and within the existing footprint, the current plan proposes to expand the vehicular parking. And and kind of re stripe and re layout that circulation and then replace the existing equestrian parking that's on that south side now on the north side.
Okay, and then I missed it, you mentioned the you when you're talking about the timing of the. Phase one CDP, you mentioned in one of the slides, you were showing the the timing for the. The environmental review and sequel process and you said something about when that CDP was likely, you know, assuming everything went on time to be brought. Forward for phase one.
Yeah, yeah, we are hoping for spring, summer of next year, we. Would like to come back to the planning commission for your your recommendation of the EIR and plan adoption to city council. At that time, we thought it would also make sense for the planning commission to consider a coastal development permit for those. Those phase one projects that would. Just be needed after planned adoption anyway, so we could make that approval contingent on the city council's. Final adoption of the plan and the the EIR.
Great and and actually one other question that's kind of clarified by I probably should ask first is just to make sure that I understood that this is a programmatic. EIR because or a review because it's the multiple stages, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, great, those were don't any, oh, Commissioner Gorn, go ahead.
Just quickly, the this estimate of two to three feet of. Erosion per year, when was that estimate made?
That came out from our twenty sixteen sea level rise vulnerability assessment as well as the twenty seventeen. Erosion studies specific to this project area.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no more clarifying questions, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public or the public comment for this item, are there any? Members of the public wanting to speak on this?
I'm saying then.
Okay, um, do I have to close it or can I leave it open in case somebody changes their mind as we're discussing?
Can you open it? Yeah, you can do it either way, I think we usually close and then reopen, but.
I will go ahead and close it seeing as we don't have anybody raising their hand, but I can always reopen it. Shall we go ahead any with planning commissioner discussion? Anybody want to start us off, Rick?
So. I'm hosting, sorry, I apologize for being late, I'm hosting a dinner that was running late here in Half Moon Bay, which is a world class site and. The people who are visiting us comment that this is one of the most amazing places they've ever been to. And I I think that as a world class location, I applaud the efforts to make sure that we have world class trails. And things that are accessible, the 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 one thing that I observe about this project is, you know, first of all, I appreciate. The improvements that have been made from railroad to Poplar Beach because we've now got a paved. Flat path, it's easy to walk on, it's a little bit wider, feels way more comfortable as a pedestrian cruising down that. But there's a lot more asphalt and when I look at the plans, I see an expansion of asphalt to the south and I see. Potential expansion of asphalt to the north and so one of the things I would ask to look at is as we think about how we expand the trail, how we improve it. Is there a way for us to do it so that we don't have so much hard cert hard improved surface? As part of the project, it'd be nice if we had something that absorbed the water more naturally, maybe reduce the runoff and erosion that's happening, so. That that's the one thing I observe, I'm a big fan of making world class trails, I think the as I've looked at the documents, the scoping of it makes a lot of sense. But but that's that's the one thing I would look at is are there things we can do as alternatives that. Allow us to have maybe the same footprint but reduce the potential for increasing. Erosion because of the way the water runs, so that that's really my big comment.
Commissioner Gorn, do you need thoughts?
I mean, clearly, a lot of thought went into this already, I would. Yes, I would say. I wondered about. This is this is kind of an information gathering period. As you do the EIR, are you involving a climatologist in that, I know that the. Report is pretty recent, but things change very quickly. And the the change in that coastline could be. Either dramatically different or they may have something to say about how to reduce erosion in certain parts of it. Part of what you're doing in when you're doing the. Our information gather.
Can I, may I say something?
Please go ahead.
So I I think it's, I think it'd be very good to point out that. That, I mean, the answer is yes, we continue to look at and 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 evaluate. What the changes and what the recommendations are and obviously I think you've identified that the twenty seventeen analysis probably is on the low side of. What now is being discussed in terms of twenty fifty and twenty one hundred perhaps. But I think perhaps one of the more interesting and frightening pieces of the information that comes out of this NCE study. Is that we are looking at erosion issues occurring at twice the rate of sea level rise issues from the drainage coming from the east side of. Of this area, so that is actually far more concerning to us and far more of an issue, I think. For us in the very near future and and the moderate median kind of future point to look at and deal with it, so I just want to make sure that we're. We're dealing with that a sea level rise is an important issue, but in this instance. Our needs are really lie on dealing with and fixing some of the stormwater and drainage issues and the fact that people are tromping through and compacting. The bluff top area they're creating, you know, compacted area where the water just runs off and deal with it, so I just think for the community and you know and I. I know some of you were not in the mix at that time when we were talking about this, but I just think that's a piece. That 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 has to be talked about and what we're looking at and dealing with that, so that that is. You know, for me, that's that's frankly more important than the sea level rise, although sea level rise is certainly not not important, so.
I mean, we, yes, we've seen that. South, you know, around Smithfield, we've seen it around El Granada, I mean, that's there are huge. Issues there and I I mean, obviously, that's a big part of what's here, I'm wondering. You know, it's kind of a two prompt attack, so there will be, there will be increased problems. I know that there's not a lot to be done about it because we're not going to put a bunch of riprap down there or anything like that, but. But there may be some. Sort of information to be gleaned from. Looking at. That aspect of it in addition to. You know, looking at fixing this drainage problem and the trail problem, so.
And I think we would absolutely concur with your conclusions on that.
Well, I I also I'm very excited to see this moving forward and I along this along similar lines. I, you know, I see and I really appreciate the comments, John, about the 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 actual threat of the the major threat of erosion. With the drainage and. The being loved to love to death out here, so I, you know, a couple of thoughts on this, I really appreciated that I saw that the review of the. Or the the potentially significant impacts made sense to me. I can start off with one minor, very minor thing, there was an error, I think we just should correct in the hazardous emissions around schools that the nearest school is. Is actually not Cunha, it's Hatch, so but it it doesn't change anything, it's not like any closer, so that wouldn't change anything, so that's just a simple thing, but. I I other than that, I really felt like it it captured what I would have included as potentially significant. I had a couple of thoughts, though, one is in to me, some of the phase one activities. Are discussing things that are that are like temporary, so they're temporary adjustment or moving back the benches and the. The fencing, which are things that would help. It won't take care of entirely, but it would definitely help reduce the amount of foot traffic that's happening. And especially since they're temporary, I'm not sure that they necessarily would need to be part of an E this programmatic EIR. I think that at this point, what I'm seeing out there is the the degree to which the erosion, the kind of the. Devegetation, like, you know, the bare ground and the erosion is is, you know, expanding and increasing is it's it's just going so much more rapidly. It's kind of reached emergency situation and so. I would encourage if there's a way, I realize that's part of the reason why I was asking about that CDP attached to the phase one. And if it's and if it's unlikely that it would move any faster with, you know, pulling out those temporary measures that are really about dealing with the immediate problems. Then maybe don't do it, but I do think that that's legitimate to point to. Pull those out as things that need to happen quickly for to to provide that that that, you know, protection. And that they don't necessarily fit in a of like the permanent type of of potential impacts that you're talking about in a programmatic EIR, I know you're not supposed to parse things out and stuff like that. But I'm just pointing out that it's not something that could like it's bad enough that it'll laugh, it'll go for another winter. But to potentially have it go yet another winter, I'm not sure, so I'm just pointing that out is is a. Potential way to strategically address with some emergency measures, some of the worst impacts that are biggest reasons why erosion is is. Is happening so rapidly out there, it certainly won't solve it, people are people, we want to get as close to the edge of the bluffs as we can, things like that, so I get it, but I think that. Some of that could help sooner, much sooner rather than later, and if there were an opportunity to get that in before more rain, I would certainly. Encourage us to to do that. The only other thing I and part of the reason I asked about was the other thing that I thought about is also the landfill more along the lines of. The fact that I think it was about a year ago that we reviewed some drilling, you know, they were going to do some exploratory drilling to find out what's in there, et cetera, and the point of that is that the county is moving towards trying to get, I think it's called clean closure. Funding, which I think is fantastic, I I know that's a very long process, but also this process is going to be a while too. And with a clean closure, potentially that whole area could be fully restored, it it used to be a drainage, a, you know, restore rep riparian kind of just. You know, wetlands area that drained out. It's feasible that that could happen again, I don't see that being part of this project and so that was part of the reason I was asking about the parking lot. If we had planned to do stuff in that southern part of the project area, then I might encourage, you know, thinking about how any future restoration. And clean closure of the landfill might have impacts, but I'm not suggesting that that is actually in this case, I just want to raise it as something down the line. That we should be thinking about coordinating those efforts if they're, you know, in the future. But just to be very clear, I'm not suggesting that that's a potentially significant impact for this review. So those are my thoughts, I think, may have had one more, but I have very messy notes and I can't find it on my sheet right now, so. Were there any other comments or or did any staff want to respond to anything that commissioners raised?
I mean, the only thing I want to say is I echo your feedback, Commissioner Gorn and Vice Chair Polgar, I'm in alignment with your feedback and. Is impressed by the thoughtfulness of your responses, so yep, I'm on the same page with my.
If I, I'll 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 be quiet and roll forward quickly, I don't think we, just back on your emergency issues, I don't think anybody disagrees and I think we've shown. Our flexibility and CDD as Community Development Department has shown its flexibility in responding to and reacting to. With that and certainly we will keep an eye on it, but frankly, most of everything now are at the point where it's a pretty significant. Issue that needs to be addressed and even fencing and doing some of those things. Part of our issue and the concern with fencing is is that without the plan and without an I, you know, without the approval tacit approval at least. With the idea of these five vista points, we will have this whole issue that kind of comes around as removing all of the whitewater views and dealing with it. So that's part of the challenge that we're trying to get to, which is that while yes, some of the things are fairly minor and would be not even considered a project, but maintenance. They do connect into this broader. they do connect into this broader issue of accessibility, view shed, accessibility, and all those things. So that's kind of the concern. I would also say this is that I, I don't know that I would characterize the county's clean closure as really something that they are moving forward with. I've not seen or heard that. I mean, that is something that we've talked about and something that we've encouraged as a city for them to consider. And, but I think their analysis for, and the drilling they were doing was simply to really analyze what's happening there, what kind of movement, what kind of conditions, and whether there is movement. I'm not saying that they're not interested in it, but that's something that I think we've talked about as the city more than the county has about clean closure. So I just want to be clear about expectations. It's not part of this project, so that's not a really an issue for this issue, but down the road, that I think that is of issue. And I would say that on Wednesday, I know, on Thursday evening, One Shoreline is, and the League of Women Voters are doing a joint meeting, and we're going to talk about sea level rise and implications on the coast side during that meeting. So I encourage folks to participate. We're going to do a short presentation, and this will be one of the issues that we talk about, just briefly touching on it, but down the coast.
And the other thoughts? Is there, I can, I don't know if there are any other members of the public who would like to speak on this now that they've heard some discussion? If there are, please raise your hand. No? Okay.
Very controversial topic.
No, it isn't. So I, at this point, there's no action. Am I correct that we're taking on this? So I, do you have what you need from us, Brittany and Noel?
Yes, I think we do. Thank you.
I'm, at this point, do we, I guess we already did the director's report. Oh, sorry.
He's on, you're on mute, Commissioner Hernandez.
Through the chair, I think we need to make a motion to close this item.
And now Commissioner Polgar, you're on mute.
Can you, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I make a motion to acknowledge that we have reviewed this item and close the item.
Second. Second.
Do you want to go ahead?
Move in second then, and we will take a roll call vote, Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gorn.
Yes.
And Commissioner, I mean Vice Chair Polgar.
Yes.
Motion not heard.
Great, all right. And I guess at this point, are there any other things that we, we haven't accomplished on this agenda, or can I have?
Communications, is anyone?
Yeah. Are there any planning, Commissioner communications to share?
Saying then.
Okay, then I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second, you have a second.
Thank you.
Um, roll call is Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gorn. And Vice Chair Polgar.
Yes. All right, meeting is adjourned. Enjoy baseball.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.
Yes.
Hi, everyone.
Bye-bye.